Call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Dave Abdulla?
Here.
Thomas Berry?
Here.
Robert Constant?
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Here.
Margaret Horvath?
Here.
Joseph Kaczynski?
Here.
Ray Muscat?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll have our Comptroller, Vince McCary, lead us in the pledge. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda with the additional item.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton?
I move to approve the Order of Business August 23rd, 2016, regular meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council with the addition of Item 13A as submitted.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the August 9th, 2016 meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kaczynski?
I move the council approve the minutes presented for the August 9th, 2016 meeting as delivered.
Supported.
Support by Councilwoman Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, Item 6, Fund Transfers and Current Claims. Mr. Chair? Councilman Berry?
Move City Council concur and approve current claims 6-1 through 6-28.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I hate to bring this up, but I have to. And I spoke with Director Bill Zimmer about this.
Which item?
Two weeks ago, about 6-17. It's the cleaning of the sewers. And I've gone back, way back, that the first five or six lines are identical every time. And it's, you know, he explained it to me that they have to go back because they're heavily used or there's people dumping something in those lines. And he told me that he was working with the attorney on trying to get some language to stop it. But I would believe there's got to be some language somewhere that doesn't allow people to dump grease and waste like that down the sewer drains.
Sure, no, absolutely.
And we have to find a way, and I don't know how, believe me, I don't know how. And I don't know if Wade Trim has a way of finding out, of finding out where this is coming from. Because this is ridiculous. The amount of money we're spending on continuously cleaning every two weeks, the same, the same drains. It's a heck of a lot of money coming out of the water budget. And I don't like it. I don't like it at all. We have to find a way to stop it.
Can't we camera that line and leave it camera for a length of time?
I don't know.
If I might, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor?
Mr. Bill Zimmer is extremely ill. In fact, I would ask that everybody keep him in your prayers. And so he unexpectedly was hospitalized, and he's not available for questions. And so we didn't have advance, we didn't anticipate his health problems, but he's not here.
Yeah, I'm just making a statement on it, and it's not questioning it, because he did answer my questions. The guy was forthcoming and told me exactly what was happening. I'm just bringing a statement saying that we've got to try to find a way to curtail this. I mean, we got to make, we got to stop it, not just slow it down.
To that point, we have ordinances in place. Watershed stewards went around and decal the sewers. And keep an eye out, because it's a big problem. People, they change their oil, they dump the oil down the sewer, grease, grease from a restaurant or where they work.
So I don't know where these places are. I mean, I'd have to look at the plot map on these things. But they're the same places all the time. So we can maybe pinpoint if it's residential or if it's a business district. And let's put a stop to this. This is constantly going on. And this is one of the reasons why I requested this being typed out instead of handwritten, because I couldn't decipher what was being said. Now I see it, and it's a continuous thing on and on. I just want to make council aware that, you know, that Mr. Zimmer has addressed the issue as best as he can, so there's no fault on his part. That was just my comment on it.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Councilman Kaczynski?
I'm not sure what western community it is. It's either Westland or one beyond, where I think they have a ordinance that requires a reservoir to be built into the line of the wastewater of a given restaurant that separates the oil from the water and catches the oil before it gets into troublesome areas, especially in the wintertime. I'm not sure whether that's based on a local ordinance of the community, or whether there are some state statutes that forbid contamination of waterways with oil.
Are you referring to a grease trap?
I'm sorry?
Referring to grease trap, like in your restaurants?
No.
Yeah, every restaurant's supposed to have.
Yeah, it would be a grease trap, but it would not be a container where they presumably dumped their grease into a container and then haul it away. This is actually in the exit, in the wastewater of the waste line of the restaurant, forcing the separation of grease and water in separate directions.
Because that grease is heavy, or it drops. But may I ask Mr. Sob, and not to put you on the spot, but our restaurants right now, or just our places of business that deal with oil and grease, aren't they required to have grease traps in their lines?
Definitely, yes.
Yeah, so everything before it hits that trap, it's not like they're, it's not like they're taking grease and dumping it into a bin outside. It's in that sanitary line, so before it hits the city line, it drops into a so-called trap. And that trap has to be pumped out on a yearly basis, like six months or whatever it is.
Why are we having this problem?
Because I believe they're coming from homes. I believe there's, somebody's home is dumping grease into their lines.
Yeah, it's more than just, Bill Zimmer and Greg Roberts and I have been in discussions, it's more than just the ordinances. The ordinances are in place. It's to be able to prove where it comes from. And those ordinance are there, but they're actually talking about, and it would cost money, but having a locking sewer system, the locks on top of them, where you can't open them up and dump stuff into them. And they were talking about a couple other possibilities. We're also looking at a dumpster ordinance to have, it's not necessarily the grease traps, but it's the restaurants themselves that may or may not take them home. Those owners might not live in the city, but if you have a restaurant, we might require you to see your grease dumps, because you do have to have so much grease dumps a year. So we are working on many possibilities, and it hasn't just come up. It's been a couple years now, because not one possible, not one solution will fix every single problem that we have. Some of them are just high use. The other ones, we are working on, so.
Thank you.
We did catch one, too. We actually did catch one, so.
Good, good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, Item 7A, advertisement forbids for Parkland Park Tennis Court Restoration Park Project, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Horvath?
I move that the council authorize the Parks and Recreation Director to prepare specifications and direct the comptroller to advertise for bids for right, to apply the Right Way Tennis Court Repair System. Since two tennis courts located at Parkland Park is outlined in 7A.
Is there support? Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion, Councilman Berry?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Gribble, sorry to put you on the spot. The Wayne County Park Village, how much is our allotment this year?
The current year we have right now? This is not, for this one?
2014, 2015.
For this one, it was, I think, $34,000.
$34,000.
A portion of that took care of the building down at the Richard Young Center.
Okay. Our five-year recreation plan?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not going to say if memory served me right, because memory hasn't served me rightly, but did you present that to us within the last three years?
You know, I would have to go back. This was something that was just brought to our attention. In regards, this is a maintenance more than, more than a capital improvement.
Understand. My question is really geared toward that five-year plan and being able to do something with Field of Dreams. That property there, I don't know what we have planned for it, but it's a nice piece of property.
Well, the problem with that is, we have to have ownership of it.
Well...
For us to use the Wayne County funds, we have to have...
Aren't we, don't we have a lease on it for a number of years?
No, we do not have a lease.
Crestwood. We don't have, it's not leased.
North Dearborn Heights Baseball has it.
Dearborn Heights Baseball has it.
They have the lease, or a agreement.
I thought we had a lease on that for 100 years.
No, Parkland Park, we do.
Yes, I know Parkland Park, we do.
But, but the Field of Dreams, that's a relationship between the North Dearborn Heights Baseball Association and the Crestwood School District.
John, man, we were going to put up lights there. You would have loved it. Your backyard would have lit up. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. And I know this is a bid request, and I had, I reviewed the Recreation Master Plan. That was 2014 through 2018. And I guess my concern is, and I understand, I saw some reoccurring themes, including maintenance of the tennis courts. And we have 20 tennis courts in our city. And then I know that just not too long ago, we approved the allocations for the Wayne County Village for this year and next year, as well as some general funds to be allocated for Swapka Park for those tennis courts, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so just kind of follow me here. My concern is, and I serve on the Disability Commission, and I served on a regional team for access to court services, including recreation, because we know how important recreation is to value and quality of life. But I wanted to say, I would really like to see us take some of this money moving forward. We've already dedicated this to tennis courts. But we have over 8,000 residents in Dearborn Heights that have disabilities, that live with disabilities. That's 14% of our population. And that is aging from toddlers up through, well, elderly. So there's a range of ages. But just even with minors, it's over 700. And that's quite a few to not have inclusive playgrounds. So that was my concern, and I just wanted to share that. I know we've talked about it before.
Well, that's, that's a semi-false statement, because all our play structures meet the ADA requirement for accessibility. All our play structures, every one of them, meet ADA requirements for accessibility.
Our restrooms as well, correct?
And our restrooms as well.
Well, no, that's, I'm going to beg to differ, only because it has to be accessible, and I'm taking this directly from the book, from the handbook for ADA, viable or available through ramps or paved, barrier-free travel routes. And we know Parkland Park is not, does not have that availability. Accessible play options have to be available. I went out and visited a few parks. If you're in a, if you're wheelchair-bound, there has to be a ramp leading up, and there should be some opportunities for them to engage in the play structure.
Okay.
And I did not see that necessarily. Now, I apologize if I did not see it.
Well, what they have signed off on, that I understand, and I've been to a number of ADA sessions, they have what they call transfer stations. And these are the ability for someone who is wheelchair-bound to be able to pull themselves up on this equipment and not necessarily be wheelchair. I did put a wheelchair one down at Daly Park, and also, and the problem we have is now we get bicycles and whatnot going up there. And I know that isn't an excuse for it, but it is an issue, and something that we have to deal with, is an unsafe situation with kids riding bikes up there now. But ADA allows you to have these transfer stations in every one of our play structures. By law, every one of our play structures must meet ADA requirements in regards to having what they consider a, an acceptable amount of activities available to the physically challenged.
Physical and mental challenged, because there's cognitive as well.
But it's going to be more physical than it is mental, because the mental will have at least the physical capabilities to climb onto the structures and to play where someone physical is definitely at, at a greater limitation.
I just wanted to reinstate again how important it is to be inclusive, especially a city with a future. And the ADA fact is on playgrounds, 50% of elevated components must be accessible and barrier-free. So with that, I know a lot of communities have added swings and things like that for those who are wheelchair-bound, and just for some consideration moving forward.
Well, we have, we have, we're looking at two of them. One swing for Van Houten Park, and then one in the Tifa Zone down at Daly Park, under Tifa funding, and trying it, and see how it works.
Any further discussion?
So we are looking at it, but, but, but once again, our play structures by law have to meet a minimum standard for ADA, and our play structures meet those standards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kaczynski?
The request is for a qualified contractor. I'm presuming that that qualified contractor has to be an installer or a franchisee for the Right Way Tennis Court Repair Kit.
That is correct. That'll be written to the specs.
So it's just not any contractor. It has to be one who is well in tune on this kind of repair.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, they have to have the specialized knowledge of how to put this process down, and it's not a read-by-numbers, you know, thing that they can do, if they want it done correctly.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, Item 8A from Mayor Dan Pileko, Waste Hauling Contract. Mr. Chair? Councilman Berry?
I move City Council approve an eight-year agreement with Rizzo at a rate of $9.32 per household, subject to the approval, subject to the review and approval of the contract as outlined in 8A.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair? Could I just have the motion, a little clarification?
Sure.
The council and I, it would be to accept the quote of and award the contract to Rizzo for an eight-year term contingent and conditioned upon the city and Rizzo's, or Rizzo Environmental Services, Inc.'s approval and execution of a written agreement acceptable to the city that conforms to the requirements of the RFP package.
So move. Is there a second?
No. Thank you.
Councilman Kaczynski, you seconded that motion?
I did.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
Well, I'll tell you what, two weeks to go through all of this, to think about this, doesn't give us a lot of time when supposedly we, this packet here was, had it in January, and we just received it two weeks ago. I, kind of disheartening that this is all rush, rush, rush. And my objection to the rush, when we knew that this contract was coming up, and we were told that this was done in January, but received two weeks ago. I'm, you know, it's hard work. I give kudos to the, to the people who worked on it, but two weeks, just, for a big contract like this, it's just, it's...
Any further discussion?
I'd like to concur with Mr. Muscat.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
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 We need to count.
Yeah, so that was, that was three noes and four yeses.
No, I didn't vote.
She hasn't voted.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can we go into, not, not, not now, but can we have another discussion on this amongst ourselves?
Well, no, because, you know, it's, we talked about this at the last meeting. It's, we're up against the wall. The time is of the essence.
You have a motion on the table, but more important, it hasn't been approved until after we review the contract. So that contract has yet to come before us. So there's still an opportunity to go with another company if that contract isn't correct. Am I correct, counsel?
Or accepting the bid.
Well, it's, it's possible, but as a practical matter, it's not what was conceived of with regards to...
Right, understood.
Yeah, and if I may, I mean, we, we talked about this. That's, and we had this, we had discussions about this since January, albeit informal discussions, but we had a lot of discussions, and then we had the study session scheduled, so. Mr. Chair? Councilman Abdulla?
The only, the only problem and the challenge that I've got with this is, this was given to us, like Councilman Muscat mentioned. This was presented to us last Tuesday, and we were presented with a lot of, you know, pretty good information from, you know, the mayor's office and Chrissy, and I thank her for putting that together. But at the same time, though, this is such a big decision for the city, for the residents. I personally am not comfortable with just one meeting with Chrissy, which was very important, of course, giving us information. And then I asked to be able to have both leading companies give us their presentation, which they did today. But me personally, and I don't know, you know, who else is in agreement, that's up to them. But I'd like to be able to research this a little bit more, because this is an eight-year plan. We want to make sure we pick the right company for this, just to make sure it's the right decision. And I think just two, one meeting and then one presentation, to me, on this type of a contract is not enough to, to be able to make that decision.
Mayor, do you have any comments on this?
If, if it will clear up with one or two of the members, I mean, it's been done before, where we've gone into a closed session, discussed it, and came back out and affirmed the vote. And I, since I don't know the nature of some of the questions, but that is something that has been done before.
I'd vote, I'd motion to go into closed session to discuss this further right now.
I would support that, Mr. Chairman. However, I would...
Let's take a walk.
We have a motion on the floor, Mr. Chairman, that we have to hold.
Okay. Yeah, it's getting a couple. Go ahead, Councilman Kaczynski.
Any long-term contract that totals up to $20 million is going to be a contract with some hesitancy in the decision. I've looked at this and read it over a couple, three times over the weekend. The reality of it is, we have two contractors who submitted bids that are realistic enough for this body to give some consideration to. One has been selected on the basis of a lower price. Another one has not been selected because they had a higher price. And I don't know where else you can go, or what else you can say to change that. This, this is pretty much the contract as it's going to be. We're not in a position to debate a contract in an open forum. I think the, the best choice would be, if you can't, if we cannot come to a passing of this resolution, then we have an obligation to go to a closed session to iron out the questions that our colleagues may have.
I, I concur.
And go from there. And, and come back and have a decision today. The decision next week or two weeks from now, I don't think is going to be any significantly different.
I can amend my vote.
I have, I have had some thoughts about developing a different timeframe and a different bottom line. But this is what we got. This is a recommendation. So if there are any other concerns that you really want to hash out, and we do some selling to one another, marketing, earfield.
Mr. Councilman? Yeah, one at a time. Go ahead.
We would, we would come to a conclusion today, and I think that's the important part of it, come to a decision. Because laying this aside for a week or two, I don't really believe is going to make any difference. As I said, we've got a recommendation, we've got two contractors, and we've got the low price, and let's go from there.
So is there a motion to go into a closed session?
Well, I have to amend, I have to amend my motion.
First, I have to vote.
Yes.
Well...
If I didn't vote.
That's correct.
Okay, and I will make the difference. So I'm not going to go through this again. I've been talking waste management for a week and a half now, and I'm not going to talk about it anymore. So I, while I have some apprehension here, I will put my vote towards Rizzo. That's the way the mayor's leaning. And let's go forward with it. That's four votes.
Well, if everybody, it sounds like almost everyone wants to have a...
No, you've got to vote.
But what are we going to discuss in a closed session? I, I don't know.
I call the vote.
We've hashed this. Back and forth, we've talked to each other.
Point of order, while you were having, Councilman Kaczynski was talking, the city attorney has a concern, so I think you should hear your...
My concern is that there's really not a good basis to go into a closed session, at least as far as I can tell.
Okay.
At least at this point.
That's what I'm worried about.
It's a moot point now. We've got to...
We, we had a vote, and I...
You have a vote, you got them.
So, 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 let's, just for the clerks, so the vote was, Councilwoman Horvath was a yes, Councilman Kaczynski was a yes, Councilman Abdulla was a no, I was a yes, Councilman Berry was a yes, Councilman Muscat was a no, and Councilwoman Clayton was a no.
So you have four to three.
So the idea of a closed session for legal reasons and for voting conclusions is moved.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair?
I think he's wrong.
Wait, hold on. So are we all clear on that?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Just a statement, and my no vote was nothing to do against Rizzo. I mean, I went out and talked to customers in Garden City. I didn't want to talk to the politicians. I wanted to talk to the people. They love them, okay? I've had waste management for years, and I love waste management, okay? But I want to do what's best for the city. I just personally didn't like the timing that this came in.
It's the process you didn't like.
Yeah, the process. It's not either company, it's just a process, and that's it. I'm in agreement with, I think I can say this, Mr. Mayor, the discussion that we had, that either company is going to be an excellent company, no matter who we choose. So I just want to put that forward on why I voted the way I did. I didn't like the process.
Understood, understood. Any further discussion?
We're done.
The next item on the agenda, Item 8B.
So, let's clarify, Rizzo's been...
Let's repeat, let's repeat the conclusion of the vote.
Yeah, I just did, but we'll do it again. So Councilwoman Horvath is a yes, and Councilman Berry's motion, you're a yes, Councilman Abdulla's a no, I'm a yes, Councilman Berry's a yes, Councilman Muscat's a no, and Councilwoman Clayton's a no.
And your statement is?
Rizzo's been awarded, correct?
The ayes have it.
The ayes, and the ayes have it. Thank you.
That's what I was looking for.
Okay. The ayes have it. The next, thank you. The next item on the agenda, Item 8B, also from Mayor Pileko, St. Linus Catholic Church Annual Festival Bike and Blade Parade.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Clayton?
I move to approve St. Linus Catholic Church's request and grant permission to hold their annual St. Linus Festival Bike and Blade Parade on Friday, September 9th, 2016, at 5:00 p.m. Police Chief Gavin and Fire Chief Brogan have both approved the route and will provide any services they may require as outlined in 8B.
Second. Second by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, Item 9A from Administrative Assistant Laslow, E., Title Agency, Inc. Purchase Agreement Closing Document.
May I ask a question, please?
Go right ahead.
I see that in the agenda item, we are being asked to have the administrative assistant to sign on behalf of the city. Is that, does that, is that legal? Yes, I mean, it's to authorize her with regard to completing the transaction closing documents, as long as...
Closing document, doesn't that require an official of the city?
Well, she's an official, as long as you authorize her to do so. I mean, you could authorize the mayor to do so, you could authorize the clerk to do so, you could authorize both of them to do so, but especially for something that's administrative like this, where basically you're talking about like closing statements and...
Yeah, closing documents, that's a sale.
Yeah, it's not necessarily something that I would consider to be unusual. I mean, a deed, perhaps it would be better to end up having the mayor and the, or the clerk sign. But I don't see this as being something that would be...
This is out of the ordinary, though, isn't it?
It would not be typical, but that's normally because you go to the person who's highest in authority in the executive department.
But I mean, at the closing, they are going to sign a deed.
Well, the deed is going to be signed, isn't this property that we're purchasing?
Is it pre-signed?
Yeah, but it's not going to, no, it's going to go down to, they're going to file a...
The county.
All right, but, but isn't this property that we are purchasing from, oh, this is for the...
Should the mayor sign the purchase agreement? The title company, we work with other ones.
But this is, this is, the mayor has signed the purchase agreement. This is basically not that we're signing a deed. A deed is being received.
Received, right.
From another party. So this is simply signing off on like a closing... From another party. So this is simply signing off on like a closing statement, you know, in terms of, and, and not only that, I would assume that these things are, they're, all these things should be reviewed by Mr. Kelgerakis. So essentially, it's just more administrative at this point than a doc, document being signed by, uh, did I get the Greek right there?
Your close.
Okay, sorry about that, Mr. Captain.
Well, everything, everything is being reviewed at a federal level, by the state police, at the local level. Uh, it's really getting almost reviewed to death. And what's happening is some people, we have one individual who found a home he likes, so he didn't wait, bought the home, and now he's got two mortgage payments. And, um, but I don't think that's either one of these, so.
These are, these are really just more like a closing statement, and no one, we aren't signing the deed. The city's not signing.
They're conveying the property to us.
They're conveying the property to us.
Counsel, uh, or, Judge Riley?
Also, there are, you know, the council approved the purchase, like to say, 130,000. The first one's come through, and there's additional costs that are on top of what the council approved to buy that house. I, I would like to see incorporated in this that it also allows the administrative assistant to sign off on the, you know, additional item related normal closing costs that go along with it, the allocation of taxes. Because basically what's happening is we are paying more because we have the, you know, the closing costs that are associated, and yet we, I, we don't have any motion that kind of picks up those incidental items that are part of a normal closing.
That's a good point.
Where, Mr. Chairman, where, where are the, uh, where's the revenue for the incidental items in?
Well, they're just noting the sale of the property. They're not talking about closing costs here, so that has to be somewhere, somewhere along, that has to get approved.
Right, see, so example, I think this first one's 131,000, and now we have to wire out tomorrow 135,000, and it's, it's normal closing cost to be.
He can't tell us.
But it's not, you know, it's not higher, and there's no kind of catch-all for those other incidental items that are, have been approved by, you know, the title.
Shouldn't those come before the council, anyway?
Well, it is a tie.
Normally at a closing, if, normally at a closing, they will all be taken care of, and everyone would expect.
Able to know the amount.
Exactly.
What, what closing costs are we talking about? Because as a purchaser.
Tax allocation of the.
Proration of the taxes.
The taxes, and the, um, I, I think there's the title insurance, or, um, I didn't bring the document with me, but.
I'm doing it. The title insurance.
That's the seller's paying it.
No, 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 not under this grant. We paid for it.
We're paying for the title insurance?
Yeah, the title insur, and council approved that a couple of meetings on August 9th. Council approved to pay for the title insurance and the title search. So the only other incidentals is the, the tax that we.
Prorations?
The proration. And, um, there's a giveback in some of the taxes, and then, um, they're paying the final water bill. It's just that difference that, that's not. And that was just presented to, go ahead.
How much are we normally looking at in terms of these additional costs?
It's under 5,000. But, but part of that was already approved by council, the more expensive part, the tax proration, the giveback for the, um, the giveback. We just received the final one today.
Yeah, but what's.
That's our first one.
So, and these are.
But the treasurer wants to basically be authorized with regard to these expenses. So how much do you estimate they would end up being for each of these properties?
For a catch-all, you can say not to, up to 7,500, but that's also including the.
That's a lot.
Well, it is, because I don't know how much the other stuff is going to be. I, I don't know how much the giveback in tax is going to be. It depends on that. This is probably an average house. This is, um.
I mean, prorations of taxes are usually going to be roughly, give or take, depends
on, obviously, the dates, but roughly about half of what the taxes would be. So if 7,500 for the taxes, that would mean that the taxes are 14,000. I can't see any of those homes having that high of taxes.
No, not that, no, because there's already part of it.
Right, so the taxes.
There's already part of it that's, that's been authorized, the title insurance.
They're going to be paid back maybe three months on taxes, four months on taxes.
Well, then you got the summer one, which you're going to get a lot of it back, or they're going to get a lot of it back. I mean, usually it's roughly about half of what's taxed, give or take.
And their taxes are not 14,000 a year.
Right.
But just the same, the cost is substantial, and it should be reviewed by council before it's approved and paid.
But it's not.
Or, Mr. Chair?
Councilman Adella?
I'm not asking that you guys would probably approve on each of them, but I mean, it's just something that happens with these sales.
Right.
You know.
Their additional cost.
Right, but you know what, Mr. Chair, why, why can't we do it one at a time? Why not? I mean, there's not that many properties.
Council, Council Chair, is this covered through the grant?
Yes.
So why not just authorize up to a certain amount of money out of the grant funds? Can that be done?
No, because we pay the 20 percent. We pay 20 percent of the grant, they pay 80 percent.
Oh, but even if it's grant money, we have a fiduciary duty to make sure.
Oh, I agree with you.
They, they gave us the money, the 131, the state. We asked for it ahead of time. The purchase agreement is approved by your body. We get it signed once the state approves, once the state approves it, officially approves it. The state officially approves it, then we take this purchase agreement and we give it to the title company at the same time we request the money from the state. The, this is the process, however, this has just become the process because there was just one house, but this is now the process. The state's going through this with us as well. We, um, then take the title company, and the title company has to have a closing date. And their closing date, they were actually pushing for two other ones to be by the end of this month for a quicker time. I'm pushing the title company to do a search or to do the closing three weeks out from when we sign the purchase agreement. So I'm making that standard that I need at least three weeks. From that, though, they're giving me the final documents today. They gave me the final documents that they need tomorrow. So there's not final calculations.
Do you know how much it is?
Yeah, it's 100.
They send us final documents.
Yeah, it's 135. I, I don't know the change, but it's like 4,000 more.
Judge Riley, this is grant money that were.
Yeah.
I'm not sure about all that. I just know that it, it was additional. I understand what the costs are. They were, you know, they were outlined. I just wanted the council to be aware. And I wa, I thought we could just put in a blanket thing that, you know, if, if the administrative assistant was to sign off on the additional allocations of a normal closing as dictated by our title company who's doing.
So if we.
Doing the allocations, you know.
If we made a motion on this, on this item here, including the additional closing cost to be.
She has the authorization to.
She'll have the authorization to approve it.
And then it would go against the grant.
I'm just trying to make sure.
No, you're right.
You know, that we have it documented.
You're right.
But I disagree, though, because closing cost is a vague term. I mean, there is.
Well, within, is, is there a way, is there a way to note that within the norm?
I mean, you can do, prorations of taxes are automatic. That can't be negotiated.
If she's received the closing documents already, we should be able to get an exact amount.
You do. You should have a purchase agreement.
I have a purchase agreement.
No, the purchase agreement would not have it. The closing documents would end up having.
Closing, you're correct.
There should be, there should be a closing statement.
Yeah, we got it today.
Do you have both of them, that you'd be able to go get them? Why don't you go get them?
I've got one.
You got one.
Yeah.
But here's another possibility. If you approved it, we would, as administration, be more than willing, after it's closed, to bring it back, and you could look at what the amount, the final amounts were in the breakout. If there was something that looked unusual on these two, then we got eight more to go or something. So I, I don't know what else to offer at this point.
Because time is of the essence, it sounds like. No, we don't want to hold it up. We just want to make sure that the, the costs that are, are being absorbed are within reason.
I agree.
Okay, but then, then, Mr. Chair, one way to not hold it up is to maybe have, like you do even in real estate companies, you could have two people signing. So it could be Chrissy and maybe the mayor, or Chrissy, maybe.
Clerk.
Clerk, Chrissy and, uh, the council, somebody.
Well, before you finalize it, where's this closing taking place?
It's taking place at City Hall. I, I did the NSP, Chris Comchuck's done the other ones. It's not unusual. This is not unusual. I know there was a comment. This is done all the time, not by, and, and this title company.
But if I had to go, you know, to the federal building or something, with my schedule already all set, I would have objected.
I don't have a problem with a clerk.
I'll make myself available.
Okay.
When's your closing?
It's at 3:30.
We have the documents, and I'm going to wire out the money in the morning. It just, and I'm not saying that there's anything wrong.
It could be pre-signed.
Yeah.
The mayor could pre-sign it that morning. Doesn't have to be at closing.
Yeah, I mean, as long as here he has signed off on it.
Well, the title company requesting that both parties be.
Right, then we, then we should be, we should be fine.
All right, well, is there a motion? Although at 3 o'clock, we're, we're meeting with the standard four.
And I have other ones set.
Well, I, we already have the documents. Chrissy signed it. I just wanted to put a blanket, something together so that we have the authority to spend the more than the 135,000, because there are closing costs that are associated with it.
That council approved part of them already with that.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry. I move City Council concur and authorize Christina Laslow and Mayor Dan Paletko to sign the required documents to complete the transaction for closing of the approved amounts for the above properties listed on Agenda Item 9A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Now, any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor.
When you say closing documents, that would include, those documents would include.
It doesn't authorize the payment. I mean, it just doesn't. I mean, that's what, that's what the treasurer's concern is. So it.
It says approved amounts for the above referenced properties. So approved amounts, I don't know how much more clarification we need.
I think the approved amounts are in the prior paragraph. That's what I think is the, is the treasurer's concern.
No, no, you see, it's listing the addresses of those properties.
No, I agree.
The approved amounts are whatever it's going to type to close those properties, which they'll have tomorrow at closing.
No, but the approved amounts that I referenced in there were the approved amounts that council had already approved through the purchase agreement.
For the purchase of the property.
Namely, in the prior paragraph, as opposed to the additional closing costs is what.
Okay, so, to complete, what, what would complete the transaction, to complete the transaction would be signing the closing papers, correct?
The, the, the motion could say something to, uh, assign the, um, uh, documents required to complete the transaction and to authorize expenses of up to $1,000 to cover required closing costs.
I don't know about $1,000, but.
Whatever it might be.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman. How about if you were to word it, just, you know, up to $1,000 in addition to the tax prorations? Because the one variable is the tax prorations, which could vary from property to property. The other costs should be somewhat limited.
So moved. Do you have that, Mr. Clerk?
No.
You have to pay attention or take notes.
Go ahead, make your motion.
No, we need the chairman to announce what the motion is. That's what we need.
So the motion needs, the, the motion needs to read authorize the mayor and Christina Laslow to sign the required documents to complete the transaction, including additional funds.
And authorize.
And authorize.
Additional funds.
The additional funds for the approved amounts of the properties referenced above.
And supported by Councilman Kozinski?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been moved that we authorize Administrative Assistant Laslow and the mayor to sign the required documents to complete the transactions at closing for the approved amounts for the above referenced properties, including additional amounts.
Here, here's the problem. She is, these agreements, they have nowhere where it's listing the mayor. She indicated before these documents were drawn up, she had to send a photostat copy of her driver's license. So.
So the mayor's out.
I don't think that, I wasn't requesting that, just that the mayor, or that, that Chrissy be authorized to sign the document for us to send out the money, not the, not all the closing stuff, or the mayor to be called, just that there are additional fees beyond the amount of the purchase price that, that.
I understand that, but I was, I was the one that brought up the issue with just her signing it.
Right.
That was me.
But it doesn't need to be signed on the official documents, just on the, the spreadsheet that's given to us to pay.
Okay, so what you wanted to read is to authorize Christina Laslow to sign the required documents to complete the transaction, including the additional fees and the amounts for the properties referenced above, something.
And authorize.
And authorize.
The.
Do we have that?
Required.
Required, well, and the, the additional funds required.
Additional funds required to close the transactions.
Okay.
Well, I, I, that's my motion.
Support by Councilman Kozinski.
For the second time.
So it's been moved and supported to authorize, uh, the Administrative Assistant Christina Laslow to sign the required documents, complete the transactions at closing for the approved amounts for the, uh, referenced properties as outlined in 9A. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, um, also from Administrative Assistant Laslow, Proposals for Pre-Demolition Investigation and Survey of Asbestos and Hazardous Materials.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move Council concur with a request and authorize the city to work with Performance Environment Services Incorporated for performing testing on the home on Hanover for the rates specified in the attached RFP recommended by Christina Laslow, Administrative Assistant.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Clayton. Any discussion? It's moved and supported to, uh, accept the proposals, uh, as outlined in 9B.
Correct.
No bids to be returned?
No.
If you outline.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, from item 9C, from Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Chairman John Kellett, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for 2016, 2017 Proposed Budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
I move that City Council receive note and file the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority budget letter dated July 5th, 2016, as submitted in item 9C.
Support. Support by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion?
Council Chair?
Yes.
I've just looked over at.
Has to be adopted.
It has to actually be adopted.
All right, will amend the motion, please, to adopt?
Approved.
I'm sorry?
Approved.
Approved. Approved the budget submitted for Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, 9C.
The supporters in favor of that? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. That ends the regular.
No, Chairman.
9C.
13A, please.
Thank you, Councilman Berry, very much. The next item on the agenda, item 13A, the additional item.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman, uh, Kozinski.
Want to make a comment before I motion, if you permit that.
Please go right ahead.
The, uh, the first time when this came around to the council, if one looked at it, especially the fact that the planning commission was involved with a meeting on this parcel of property, one would have reasonably come to a conclusion that this was a establishment of a new business, when in fact it is an add-on to an existing business. And, uh, I suppose now it could be called a mistake to hold this up for a couple of weeks, not allowing this person to conduct his business. But at any rate, I move that the council approve 13A as presented, authorizing an additional business activity to occur at 6528 Telegraph Road.
Support.
Support.
Mr. Chair? Support by Councilman Berry. If there's any discussion, Councilman Musket.
I believe that we need a clarification from our clerk, because I believe he was.
Yeah, I see the clerk.
Kind of shaking his head, no. So I'd like to get more clarification of what's going on.
It is a new business due to the fact that ownership was changed. So when the ownership was changed, although the business previous was J&amp;J Collision, it's still a new business for licensing purposes because the ownership has changed. So the owner had to go through a new CFO and a licensing procedure. It's not simply just an add-on to an existing business.
That's correct. If there's been a change in ownership or title.
Okay, I, I stand corrected two times then.
So the reason it was brought to the council is because, um, the existing business was a collision shop.
Yes.
And the new owner has requested to continue the collision shop business with the add-on of the auto new and used, which.
We're used. We, we categorize it as new and used. That's our category. So that triggered,
that triggered the need for a council approval. So that triggered, that triggered the need for council approval.
Okay. We'll do what is the right thing to do, but if you go through all of the documentation in the backup, the new owner merely asked, and this was repeated in the planning commission, for authorization to sell used cars. There was no mention that the transfer had occurred, at least I didn't recognize it as such, so whatever is recommended by the city clerk, I can conform to by approving this new business license, which is inclusive of an add-on activity.
That, that is right. Mr. Chair?
Who supported it?
I support.
You did.
Yeah. I just want to make a clarification. When we talked about this at one of the last meetings, I quite honestly, just based on the added loan, had no idea what business this is, and, I mean, I knew in general, obviously it's between Ford Road and Warren Avenue, but was not familiar with it. I took the time to go drive by this particular business and, you know, from, from what I looked at, everything seemed to be obviously, you know, pre-World Cup, pretty nice, and the whole nine yards. The biggest issue that we had as a city council at the time was what was written on the bottom, which was they were gonna do, they were gonna be, they were gonna have used car sales or auto sales, but in addition to that, a collision shop. An issue was whether this would be, whether this would be allowed, whether this is to code, et cetera, et cetera. What I've found out since then, when I drove by, is that it's been a collision shop all along, so nothing has changed. So if it had been allowed to be a collision shop, and I drove by and I seen the signs and the whole nine yards, it had been allowed to be a collision shop before, the new gentleman purchased it and is gonna continue it as a collision shop. And again, the only issue we had last time was the collision shop, the collision shop part. It's still the same exact way as it was before. What made some confusion last time is on the bottom part, where it says auto repair and then moto, or motos, I'm not sure, but this was something that was added on at the clerk's office. This was not a part of his initial application. The issue was whether he was applying for too many things, but as I've looked at it in detail, and as I've driven by the property, I found it's basically, yes, it is a new business, but the same type of business. So I personally would be in favor of this, and I'm also in favor of making it easier for businesses to open up in our city, instead of making it more difficult with all kinds of bureaucracies. Obviously, though, at the same time, it needs to be up to code, needless to say. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Clerk?
I, I would be remiss if I don't talk about this. The problem was not with the application, as I stated, on two different occasions. The problem was not with the categories. The gentleman submitted everything he needed to get a business license. He submitted a CFO. He had the planning commission already approved. That was not an issue. The issue that was brought up by this honorable body on July 25 was the issue of the spraying. That was the issue, as to whether he was indeed going to be spraying, and did he have the proper ventilation, the booths, and whatever was required by my OSHA. The issue is not that the existing business did it so he can do it, excuse me, but the issue was brought up by this honorable body that is the proper ventilation, and according to, you talked about my OSHA, I believe, that was the issue. That's why it was tabled.
Has that been satisfied?
I don't know, Councilman, I don't...
Mr. Chairman?
I don't have inspections, I don't, we don't do that, that's not up to the city clerk's office.
Councilman Kozinski?
Yes, there are comments about the environmental approvals, it's not yet arrived yet.
Well, yeah.
It's in the documentation.
We're, we're, yeah, putting the business aside, but the owners here, if you would step up to the podium...
So, go ahead. The issue, from what I understand, first, are your paint booths? And are they up to my OSHA standards?
Yes, we have a spray booth system.
You have a spray booth system, but that's an answer. Are they up to my OSHA standards? Do you have, have they...
When the city, when the city people went there, they approved everything, so I'm guessing...
But does OSHA have to approve it? My OSHA has to approve it, don't they?
Well, and if I might, so there was some concern about overspray, or, and how often are you gonna be painting cars there? Are you gonna be doing that a lot, or weekly?
Regularly, daily basis, hopefully for business.
That's a collision shop.
I'll draft spray booth.
Because I, I know in our business, it's just a repair facility, we have to get my OSHA approved before we can do anything. So have you been my OSHA approved?
I would have to say probably yes, because of booth...
But no, no, you're assuming, and I apologize for cutting you off, and I don't mean to embarrass you, but have you applied?
With the new owners?
Yes.
No.
So then we're only, excuse me, we're only assuming that the old facility was all approved and had everything, all the proper filtration, so it doesn't get into the neighborhood? Because we've had problems before with companies spraying, and it gets out, so I guess that was our concern the last time, and, and now we even get something about selling used cars. That wasn't there the last time we talked, okay? Was it there? Okay, so, excuse me, I stand to be corrected, but as far as the paint goes, we just gotta make sure that all the filtration is up to snuff. We just can't say, well, I assume so, and then obviously you said we didn't apply, so...
If I can, if I can clarify and piggyback off of Councilman Abdullah, we're not looking to give you a hard time. We want your business in the city. We want to make sure that you thrive. We're, we're proud of the businesses that are here and are doing well, but we just want to make sure it's being done right. We have an obligation to the residents that live around you, and the people that work in there.
Okay, so that's the only thing that's holding us up, is just...
No, and then, yeah, well, the business license we're voting on now, and as far as, I'm sure owners will be out there, you haven't had any problem with overspray going out in the neighborhood or anything, or...
Not to seal booth. You open the door, it shuts off.
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I'd just like to point out, I'm looking at the paperwork here that we've received. If you notice, there was a certificate of occupancy, a full certificate of occupancy issued on 4/28/2016. Some of this information, obviously, we didn't have at the last meeting we had pertaining to this, but we've since then, obviously, been given that. It says on here, there's a full certificate of occupancy, and it says 3/9/2016, inspection done. Buyer needs to sign an as-is letter for the parking lot, meaning, a lot of times in the city, they have as-is letters pertaining to concrete and what have you, which basically means what you see is what you get. And then it says here, waiting for environmental testing. And this was the paperwork that was supplied to us.
And they're probably talking about the underground, any underground contamination, which like a phase one or...
Probably, yeah, phase one or phase two. Did that get approved? Okay, now, if I may ask, the gentleman, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the name.
One.
Okay, I kind of got the impression, did you used to work there before?
Yeah, I don't know if they're about 20 years.
How many years?
20.
Oh, 20 years. Okay, so has it always been used as a collision shop, then?
Yes, 1961, I think it was founded, by Jack and John, J&amp;J Collision.
Okay, so this is where I personally had a, you know, a little bit of an issue with, and again, I didn't know about this all before, prior to looking into it, when it was first presented to us, is if it's been given, and I know that doesn't necessarily mean it's automatic approval, but if it's been given a certificate or an okay to open that business in that particular area, over and over and over and over again since the 60s, okay? Then we have a new business move in, same business, nothing's changed, at least from what I see. To me, I see no problem with approving something like this.
We got a motion on the table, I can call the vote. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. That ends it. Thank you. Regular business portion, I mean, any announcements from anybody at the table?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Horvath?
I have a couple of things. The seminar, and I thank the mayor for getting, or the mayor's office for giving out the letters to all of the boardroom commissions regarding the seminar, seminar and parliamentary procedure. I spoke with the clerk, and the clerk spoke with McCaffrey, and we're gonna have it at the library.
Okay.
Because their overhead stuff is not as antiquated as ours here, and, and the, the presenters will be able to face the audience, as opposed to face us and have the audience...
Do you want to send out another letter?
Yeah, so, and we'll post it on the doors and everything, so it'll be at the library instead of here. It holds about 100 people, so we shouldn't have a problem there. The other question that I have is, or request, is I know there's gonna be a lot of police officers and some fire people leaving in the next 18 months or so. Are you, are we going to have discussions on how, what your plan is, and how we're gonna, you know, take care of what's happening? Because there's a lot of people leaving.
Right, and as the chief would be able to confirm, we've, we've included some of the other command structure in our discussions in regards to the police department, so hopefully we'll finalize that next month or so, and then we'll present it to the council. The same discussions have come with the fire department, and we'll be happy to present, but I think we got the main, and we took care of that, is that we're gonna, the chief is gonna continue as chief.
Okay. The other question I have is, and I asked this a while back, what's happening with River Oaks? Dan Brooks isn't here, so should I hold off?
No, I, hopefully, Mr. Miyaki's got a, I went to the association, told them that the grant had not been approved, that I didn't see any possibility of the council adopting such a project unless they were willing to pay for at least a good portion of it. So we weren't sure, there's a section in the charter in which the people can appeal and require a improvement, and they agree that they will pay for the improvement. So I'm not sure how that language, but I asked Mr. Miyaki, I thought that it was a city function to have him draft a resolution that they could sign. They're gonna have to go and get 50-plus percent, and then bring it back over here.
So you're working, so it's a work in progress?
Yeah.
Okay, that's...
But they, they felt very strongly on the plan that they originally accepted, because there are, there was two other plans that were a lot cheaper, and they said, no, we don't think that satisfies our need, and we want to, we want the proposal we did. Then I said, you're gonna have to throw some money in. So what, what I think they were, what they were looking at, it might cost them $1,000 a home, but then they asked, well, and, and we have done this in the past, where we've completed a project and then billed people over three years or something. But the key is, is they gotta get property owners 50-plus 1%, and I don't know if you drafted that, or if you sent it out yet, but that's, I gave them that assignment about a month ago.
Mr. Chairman, what, Mr. Mayor, what, what is the process for attaching the revenue in some ways? Is it a special assessment?
Yeah, it would be a special assessment.
Two sections, two sections in the charter, one is assessment and, okay, that's all I want to know.
Yep, so they would, on their tax bill, they'd get that line, and they said that, because they didn't feel as an association, if they had made the commitment, they have problems collecting dues. So they go, we're not gonna, we don't know, if they won't pay the dues, they're not gonna pay the assessment. And that's why we told them that the only way that I felt I could come back to this body is there's gotta be a way to pay for it, and that way is through that special assessment in the charter, and that's why, I don't know which of the two sections you were gonna focus on, but we'll be giving them the petitions, and then it's up to them to come up with the 50-plus 1%.
Thank you. While I have the floor, may I?
Councilman Horvath, were you done?
Go ahead.
You didn't have the floor, I had it. No, I'm done.
Ladies first in America.
Councilman Kozinski, go ahead.
The, this is, I was gonna say this, if a closed session would have developed, but Constable Miyaki advised that there was no solid reason for a closed session, and conceivably it could have led on to some other expensive attachments, as legalese goes. And I don't, I don't intend to hurt anybody's feelings by bringing this out. The vote is cast, we're going with the contract, but the point that I was gonna try to make is that what was not the resolution was not the process. The resolution was about passing a contract.
Yes.
So, all said and done, the hope was to have a seven vote on the contract, and if that was possible, I'd like to see that happen, but it's done. Some of us voted on the contract, and some of us voted in a manner to point out a focus of attention on the resolution or the process, so...
Process, yes.
Yeah, makes sense.
I was wanting to bring that out, but my friend at the end of the table there's got more handles than I can handle with regard to the legalese.
Yeah, just, I'm sorry, there's just not a good basis. That's why we had the open session previously, so...
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Clayton?
Um, thank you. Just want to ask real quick if the city of Dearborn has provided us any more update regarding the 911 dispatch outsourcing, in particular with participating communities? I understand that Allen Park and Lincoln Park have been approached, and I guess my question is, have we heard or have received an update regarding Wayne and Westland? And if so, with Allen Park and Lincoln Park in particular, because they do participate already with the Downriver 911 Consolidated Dispatch, the financial contributions, and how does that, or would it possibly skew our cost?
I will, I told this body that if I get any communication from Dearborn, I would share it. You have not received anything, because I have not had any contacts at all with the city of Dearborn, and as far as I know, no, none of my department heads have. So I cannot comment in regards to whether they've expanded the scope, limited the scope. I have not seen any, I have absolutely had not a single piece of contact with anybody in the city of Dearborn.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other announcements? Mr. Chair? Councilman Abdullah?
This is not a announcement, and unfortunately, I've looked into this preliminarily, and I guess it takes a charter, takes a vote to be able to change this, but I would like to see us go in a direction where the residents would have the opportunity to be able to say their piece on different issues that we vote on, instead of having to wait until the end. I know it's a part of the charter where we wait until the end, but if there's anything that can be done within the legalese, without having to take it to a vote to the residents, to allow the residents to be able to speak their mind on issues that we are voting on before we vote on it, I for one would like to hear the residents, and I know lots of us would, hear the residents' opinions prior to voting, instead of waiting until the end, like in this particular case, where we've already voted on everything, so whatever they say...
Mr. Chair?
Is not taken into consideration as much.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Barry? In regards to that, subjects such as the waste management, subjects such as the 911, that's where we have the special sessions. I will tell you that if before each agenda item, we allowed residents to come up here and speak, you'll be here till 3:00 in the morning, honestly. And I respect what you're trying to achieve, and it's admirable, but realistically, I don't think our department heads would sit around, this place would be empty. Well, in some cities, some cities...
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's done in other cities.
Doing it at the beginning of the meeting, some cities have a consent agenda, so we'll...
I mean, I have seen it in Dearborn, obviously, and they don't stay until 3:00, 3:00 a.m. I mean, they are able to get it done within whatever reasonable amount of time. I'm able to watch on video, obviously, but I do know a bunch of the city council people there, and, you know, I mean, it may take an extra maybe 10, 20 minutes, 30 minutes, but I think it's worthwhile to be able to hear the residents' views. Yeah, you're right, maybe not on every item, but on some items, I think we should give them an opportunity to be able to say their thing.
That's why I thought we had the special sessions, if we feel that it should go to a special session. I'm not disputing you, I'm just saying that was the reason for the special sessions, so that we had that time dedicated to that subject, so that it wouldn't be minimized as an agenda item, and everybody felt rushed to make a decision on it. So you can sit here and listen and ask the questions, go home and come back the next meeting with it on the agenda, and then make a decision from there. So, I...
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kozinski?
I spent a lot of time at this day, both as a council member and as a zoning board member, and also some time with the general government pension board. And one of the problems of allowing extensive discussion... And one of the problems of allowing extensive discussion with regard to various issues that the council members are elected to address and make decisions on, sometime the residents believe that they have more information or knowledge than we do. That's not true. Each one of us has a significant amount of tricks in our bag and knowledge that goes with decision-making. The other, the other part of the spectrum is that the agenda is posted now, and it didn't use to be, is posted on the electronic website.
Website.
So there's every opportunity for someone to read that and try to master it, and then come up with some decisions. And at that point, contact a council member. There are seven of us. If you can't get one, you get the other. Trying to listen to various discussions about various issues is a, is a mind-boggling, time-consuming responsibility and job. And I agree with Councilman Barry, we'd be here for hours after midnight, and we have employees that come in deliberately before the work hour to catch up on, catch up and speed up the work process that they're responsible for. And in the final analysis, would you need a council member? If you take the first seven people that come in the door and says, all right, you seven are going to sit up here and make the decisions, is that, is that what you want? Or do you want somebody that has extensive knowledge and experience to make those decisions for 60,000 people? Usually, you've got, you've got a handful of people that want to dwell on the subject. Just take the recent history. The history showed us flooding concerns, dog issues, dog waste, and now, I hope to God, it's not going to be a 9/11 issue. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Councilman Muscat.
I wholeheartedly agree with Councilman Abdullah, because I, in the past, have always asked myself, well, what happens if, you know, you vote on something, but then somebody comes up and interjects something to put a little light bulb in your head? And even though it may never happen to do that way, that, I have always encouraged the residents to call me, email me with their concerns, to let me know. That way, we have an opportunity to discuss it amongst ourselves, go to the department heads, try to find answers for the people, and get as, as good of an answer as we can for them. You know, you can toss a coin in the air and say, I like it or I don't like it, but as elected officials, I do, and I guess Lisa was the one that really taught me, make sure you get out there and, and give the people your card, tell them to call you with their concerns, so we can bring it forward to here. But I do agree with Mr. Abdullah.
And that's something we'll, we can address and talk about at the parliamentary procedure meeting on the sixth.
And I agree with Councilman Kozinski also.
Well, at, at the risk of repetition, that's what the Thursday delivery to Tuesday meeting is, at the timeframe. And again, at the risk of repetition, we didn't have it on electronic media before. This is no new chapter about how people can get indoctrinated with information and make the contact.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Well, two things I want to point out. Number one, when a resident comes in for something like this to be, before we vote, they have the, all seven of us right here, instead of having to contact us one at a time. Number two, it goes on the website, I believe, either Friday or the weekend, I'm not sure the exact dates, but there may not be enough time to be able to get ahold of us, maybe on the weekend, plus with the city being closed on Friday. So then they got Monday, and it's probably hard to get ahold of all, all of us. In addition to that, the other issue I've got with it, we're always concerned about different things that may come up, but yeah, you base it on history. You take a look at the city of Dearborn, I know does it this way. I believe it was Westland, if I'm not mistaken, that does it this way. There's a multitude of cities that do allow the residents to speak prior to voting, and to the best of my knowledge, I've not seen that be a problem. Again, I know it's a charter that has to be changed, but I'd like to see the city personally move in that direction. Thank you.
We'll talk about that at the parliamentary procedure meeting.
Any other announcements?
I respect everybody's opinion.
Any other announcements? Chief.
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. I just wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday is our 24th Annual Chili Cook-Off. A lot of you guys know already. Actually, thank you all for making a donation once again. The council always makes a donation to pay for our, our DJ and the entertainment. We have Benny and the Jets coming again to, to provide that for us. This is going to be at Parkland Park. It starts at noon, and it goes usually till, till it gets dark. At around 2:00 is when they do the judging of the chili, and after the judging is complete, then the chili goes for sale. But along with the chili, they have hot dogs, hamburgers, usually corn on the cob, all kinds of other things to eat. So if you don't like chili, there'll be something for you to eat there still. Lots of stuff for the kids. The fire trucks, obviously, will be there. There's a dunk tank. We usually set up our, our deck gun and spray all the kids down. Helicopter usually comes, usually around 1:00, one of the Med Flight helicopters comes. So it's just, it's a great family event. It's, it's all for the Great Lakes Burn Camp. All the proceeds go for sending kids to a burned, sending kids who've been burned into a fire to, to a special camp. And so it's a great cause, it's a good time, and we hope to see everybody out there Saturday, this Saturday, the 27th, at Parkland Park.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Muscat.
Let me apologize now for not being there Saturday. My granddaughter's having her birthday party, and she rules you.
She trumps me, huh?
I'm sorry about that.
It was late this year. You guys can make it next year, right? We'll miss the birthday.
Move it up.
That's right.
Have a birthday there next year.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other announcements? Anyone else? Our, our library director is tending to an ill family member.
I've got a priority.
Chief, did you have something? Okay, comments, any citizens come up and residents, I'm sorry, state your name and the street you live on, right up here to the podium, if you would.
Hi there. I'm B.J. Hayes. I have talked to Marge Horvath earlier today, which is probably the best person I talked to. She answers the phone. Anyways, we have a basketball hoop that a neighbor has placed into the street that has made a draw of a huge amount of kids. The police feel that my street should be a play area. They are using, I'm at the dead end at the creek, there's only four houses on the lot, and they use the dead end for urinating and whatnot, and we had to clean up their candy wrappers, and they, they get people that did park on the street, they, they asked them to move their cars. Okay, they moved their cars. I'm the only one that's, will park a car. I won't even park my good car in front.
What, what, what street do you live on, Mr. Hayes?
Dudley, 5452 Dudley. I'm the only one that'll park, and I'll only park my truck there because, you know, who wants their mirror knocked off or something, the glass broken or whatnot from kids, all these playing a basketball game in the middle of, middle of our intersection. I've lived there for three years now.
Dudley and the Creek?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm on Dudley.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, if I may, can interrupt. I just want you to know that the police department is aware of this. He's here tonight because he's got an extensive story to tell, but they are, they've been out there. And so the last thing that the chief and I discussed was that he come here, and, and then the chief's going to take it from there.
And beg you and plead you. We do not deserve that, that there's been kids on that street all this time. We've all got backyards. We had, the place that has the hoop out in the middle of the, middle of the street has a backyard with a driveway and cement and everything, and that's not good enough. They got, they got to have my whole street. Why should they take our whole street from us? And, and two of them have the bumper, those stickers on their doors that's got Mr. Potico's name on it for election, and it says, no solicitors. I, I want one of them. You never sent me one. But anyways, I beg of you, I, we want our street back. We want our street back. This, this isn't right. This, these are all homeowners, except for this one house that's a rental unit. These people might be here for who knows long, but it's, we're homeowners. We're, we're the true roots of this city, and we should live our house, our, our streets should be peaceful, please. We need this.
Thank you.
Now, this is pretty clear. I gave the ordinance to the city council, as far as I'm concerned, that it's above the police's pay grade, that they, they say, through our interpretation. None, interpretation, it's more or less black and white. I mean, it's very clear. It doesn't say, well, if we think so. Well, no, that's.
Councilwoman Horvath, go ahead. Did you?
He also mentioned to me today that it's not, it's not, if it were just the kids on the street, that's one thing, but they're coming from all over.
They're coming from all over. They come on their bicycles and whatnot. You got bicycle traffic coming in and out and everything. I used to be an inspector in Detroit for 20 years, and I'd go around, and I'd see all these basketball hoops around, and they were all doing drug deals. And, and just give this, give this enough time. We got one, we got one, we got the seed going right now, huh?
Chief, go ahead.
The day shift lieutenant was out there and spoke with our citizen here, and it's at the dead end, and the way the lieutenant looked at it is, you know, it wasn't interfering with traffic, sure, since it was at the dead end. So he instructed the youths to put the basketball net in the yard at night, and, you know, he told them at the time they could play in the street. I'll address it with our citizen here and see what we can come up with. But at the time, when the lieutenant was out there, he said it was a dead end, they were not really interfering with traffic. It's a different thing if they're interfering with the vehicles in the street or his house, so I'll address it with him.
They're interfering, they're interfering by leaving candy wrappers, soda, soda butt cans and whatnot, and, and urine.
I'll talk to you after the meeting.
And they are breaking, they are breaking our shore briefs.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
My name is Clara Hayes. I'm sitting in my front room. We have vertigo blinds. I'm sitting there, I look up, I see a shadow. There's two boys chasing a basketball in front of my window. They look up at me right through the window, hold up the ball, smile, and go on their merry way. I mean, that's not right on my property. Our house sits back at least, I'm not good at feet or anything like that, but we have a very big front lawn. There's no reason for their basketball to be way up there. There's no reason for them to be looking in our windows. There's the language they use.
You, you live on Dudley also?
Yes, that's my husband.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilor Miyake?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it really just should not be in the public street. I mean, as long as it is a public.
Also, there is a neighbor, and his driveway is at the end, and there's also a turnaround at the end of the street.
It's a long meeting.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Mr. Chair.
The chairman's.
Mr. Chair.
I had a comment.
Councils. You did. No, you didn't finish it.
He didn't get to finish.
I said enough. This has been a long meeting.
He's done. Okay. Anybody else?
So are you going to wait and speak with the chief?
Is it against the law or not?
It is. If it's in the public street, then it is in public right-of-way. It should not be there.
It's as simple as that. They should stop the basketball play.
Mr. Chair.
It's an ordinance.
Maybe we could talk to the recreation director, maybe adding something either, because I know some tennis courts include basketball there, just as an option at the park.
Mr. Chair. One of our officers in attendance tonight, he's been out there on numerous runs, and he says that the basketball net is up on easement. It's not in the street. Is that right, officer?
That's correct.
They move it, they move it from one side of the street to the other. They move it up on their lawn. They move it across the.
The subdivision where I live, it's a problem. They drag it onto the street, they're playing, the car goes to go through, they don't want to stop, and.
I don't want to beat.
Beating the dead horse, yeah.
I don't want to beat this to death, but honestly, you have two issues here. First of all, you have the issue of residents not being able to enjoy their, their peace and quiet in front of their home, and then you have children that are looking for someplace to, to play. And if, and if, if somehow, I don't know who the resident is on that property would take responsibility for maybe cleaning up and kind of monitoring and governing what goes on, it may work out. I mean, I was young ones too, and I got to be honest with you, I threw a basketball hoop on the curb and played on the street because I didn't have any place else to do it. So I kind of feel for these guys, but like council says, we don't, we didn't. Because like council said, it's in the ordinance that it doesn't. So, I mean, really, between a rock and a hard place, I guess legally, can't do it.
They can go over to Annapolis or.
Legally, they can't do it.
Or Bedford or.
Yeah.
So the, the police will be back out there. Anyone else? You got to shut it down, chief.
Yeah.
Please state your name and the street you live on.
Dabber Brown England, 11 Silvy Lane. I want to thank Councilman Abdullah for bringing up the people needing to speak first. It does work in several other cities. I've been to several city council meetings in other cities, and it does work, and it doesn't drag it out till 3:00 in the morning. And as far as the, the comment about council members knowing more than we do, that's kind of a slam against the, I think, the members of the, of the residents, because I think a lot of us are well informed in some issues, especially the 911 issue. I think a lot of us have just as much information as you guys do. So I think that that was uncalled for, and it was very degrading to the residents who live in this city.
Yeah, direct your counsel to the chair, and that's one of the things we'll be talking about at our parliamentary procedure meeting.
Okay. And I would like to say that there are definitely three members of council that definitely get back to you and do care. That's Councilman Abdullah, Councilman Muscat, and Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. They always call us back. Council, Councilman Barry, I haven't had much time with you, because I know this is your first time back, but I do appreciate you guys supporting things that are important to us. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
No, I can't. I know I, okay, forget it.
Motion to adjourn. Yeah, because we'll, we'll debate the support it. Good evening, everyone.